All right, so I'd like to call the order of the Massachonian Planning Commission for meeting for January 9th, 2023. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook's?
Here.
Mr. Siobhan?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhorst?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
All right, and then approval of December 19th meeting minutes. I believe we were all here. Any comments, corrections?
I'll move to approve Ms. Minett.
All right, motion approved, or seconded?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. First agenda item, the wave car wash signage. Name it. Get your name.
Yes, Mark.
All right. I think you guys received some BZI approvals, our CO approvals on a pile, some combination. And that, our reviewer, Mr. France, got that after Adrian's comments. So, I guess in light of that, would you like to go over your comments?
Sure, yeah, so that is correct. So my report dated January 1st, some of these items, as we introduce the memorandum, are moot at this point because you did receive some variances. So I'll go through that briefly. The previous proposal was a 15-foot-tall sign. The applicant reduced that down to 10 feet. Eight feet is required maximum by code. The applicant did receive a variance for the 10 feet that was approved by the horizontal appeals. Case 685 and 687 and 688 addressed the variances that were requested for the wave car wash. So they did get that two feet. And in the overall area, they did receive a variance to allow, instead of the 40-square-foot maximum that's in the code, the horizontal appeals granted a 60-square foot, so an additional 20 square feet. And then they also, as it relates specifically to the electronic message, electronic message center, the EMC, the code limits it to 30% of the total area of the sign. And horizontal appeals granted an additional 10%, so a total of 40% of the message area can be EMC. So I think the numerical standards are now met by the sign. What still remains, the information as it relates to the specific technical standards of the dynamic display, that has yet to be submitted to the planning commission for review. And that's outlined essentially one through nine of my memo on page two and three. And just indicated that the information wasn't supplied. Now, the letter height, I believe it's 50 mile-an-hour zone. So the 12 inches, which is the minimum standard, is being met. So that's fine. So it's really those technical requirements that are outlined in the code that still need to be submitted. And then the overall design of the sign is something the commission still can talk about, but the, again, those numerical standards have been waived, if you will, by receiving variances. I can answer any questions?
So the wall signage and all that is okay as well?
Yeah, they reduced the wall sign, which freed up space, freed up square footage because the overall site is limited to 110 square feet. You may remember the first time they came in, and there was a significant amount of signage. So they did reduce, made a good effort to reduce the amount of area, and then went for the, to the BZA for the ground lining of the sign for those other issues. They did eliminate, sorry, they did eliminate one of the signs. So previously, there were two wall signs, they're down to one wall sign now.
All right.
I have nothing to add.
All right, you guys have questions or comments?
No, they're requirements. So they, they need to submit that data for, when you submit a sign application for electronic message center sign, all of that data is supposed to be supplied because we evaluate that as part of the application. Previously, we had requested that, it just has not been submitted to date.
So can you approve it based on the commission that's submitted?
That's up to you. I mean, they are technical requirements. I mean, I'd have to believe that the applicant's not going to be here tonight if they couldn't adhere to those.
I already checked with Watchfire.
I'm sorry?
I checked with Watchfire, maybe you can actually, that all these can be met.
Yeah, so it's up to the commission if you want to approve it, subject to, and then we would just need to confirm those standards are met. That's, it's no problem for, for, I think.
Be subject to administrative approval, is that sort of how we do it? Yeah, I think that's what you said we could. What do you think about that? What do you think that, I think as long as they confirm that it can be met, so you feel comfortable that they can, since they're all technical specifications, I'd be okay with some of that in the administration. Checking that everything.
Yeah, we're also for the, only for 20 seconds, making sure there's no animation, no glow into their brightness was actually going to be automated because of the time factor. So that's what we saw, the sign requires. So it's going to be known at like 4:05 or 15:00.
So, okay, so all that, I mean, I'd be okay with that, if everybody else is okay with that part of it. The only issue, I guess, I've got with the sign is just the general, the general look of it. I think, to me, it kind of looks like you got this separate base, you got some separation, then you've got the electronic message part, then you got the separation, then you got the round with the logo in it. And it's almost like three separate pieces, there's two signs, kind of separate signs stacked on. It'd be nice if there was a way, if you look at a lot of our other signs, they're either enclosed or they've got, you know, particularly this kind of sign, you know, enclosed in the brick or at least some kind of cap or something.
No, I think I give what you're saying. I think they're just putting us around, around the actual sign and message board and stuff like that, so it looks completely similar. You can see those posts coming up and through, and I don't think that's really aesthetic, because I'm thinking of putting the message board, so it's just directly on top of the stonework. And then moving the wave car wash, even if there is a little bit of a gap there, but I think having something that goes all the way up and around the actual car wash sign itself would be a lot more.
Like a frame, is that what you're thinking?
A frame around it.
A frame, some sort of.
I think brick would look really nice, but.
It just goes up and some of the side of the brick.
Yeah, that's kind of, just one of the thoughts, that's kind of like a nice cap or something like that, just to top it off, similar to what, like, similar to what that sign looks like, where it just looks more cohesive as opposed to three separate parts.
Would that be difficult for you to do that, to encapsulate?
On the brick?
Well, whatever, some kind of frame around that sign.
A frame, aluminum frame, if you do aluminum frame around here.
That's kind of what I was thinking, some kind of frame.
Actually, we would sit this, sit the electronic message center on the brick here, create a frame, like a blue frame around here, so.
Kind of like a football sticking up in here, that's kind of what, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I think this, it just seems disconnected, similar to what you're saying. I think that's not, that's a good possibility.
Yes, this is a much, much, much bigger sign, but something that's kind of got the pieces enclosed somehow. So it's not three separate pieces, kind of with posts in between them. That's kind of what we're used to in Macedonia with some sort of frame around. This one's just sticking out there, you know, a lighted sign, too. Yeah, ever read by?
May I ask a question, Chairman?
Please.
So the, had you, has any consideration been given to taking the wave piece, which is, I guess, a cabinet-style sign, and moving that almost down and left and having essentially a rectangle with on the inside of that rectangle, brick monument, you'll have the wave insignia or dimensional letters and dimensional logo, just like you have on your wall sign, and then have the EMC element next to it? Is there any consideration given to that, so it's integrating it all? Because I think that's kind of what the commission's essentially saying, so it's all integrated into one component. You could, you could make it wider, you could reduce your wave to more of a circle as opposed to a wide, a wide oval. Just some, I'm just, you know, spitballing a little bit, I don't know if any consideration was given to that, but to, to address what they're saying, to keep it so it's more of a, you know, a single cohesive unit. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, I think we talked about this previously, but the, the sign, the EMC is for onsite messaging.
That's correct.
Onsite, okay, so it's not advertising off-site?
No, nothing off-site.
Good, because that's not permissible, it's considered a billboard and still permissible under some federal court cases that allow municipalities to still regulate billboards as off-premise signage.
No, no, it's all for the.
Okay, good.
Captain, could I ask one more question?
Yeah, please.
It's really kind of off the subject, but I, we brought it up a long time ago. In front of KFC, they have a monument sign, and it's three-quarters blank, in other words, above, did you ever think of adding, you know, yours below theirs or something, like, like they would, like they were showing you pictures where they have it? You never thought of that?
No, yet.
But, but you didn't know how to do it?
Mr. Frank, you want to answer that, or you don't need to?
As to why there are no other tenants on there?
Yeah.
I know there's a reason.
Well, I'm sorry, you know, so Chris Hall is the one who's saying.
Yeah, Chris Hall had.
Chris Hall, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess it's probably for BZI three times, or two or three times, we've been asked several times.
The BZA likes a blank, or?
Yeah, I can't answer, they not allow anybody else on there.
That's kind of odd.
It is, because, yeah, we would love to have that, because you're right back at the corner there.
Never mind, forget it. I didn't, I didn't know all that history.
Oh, yeah, I asked, matter of fact, I think we started this last summer, it came up before, and has, we need to just, you know, Chris Hall, so my chances have been quite up. Because that's a perfect location, but.
Never mind, it's not, it's not involved with what we're looking at here.
But on that level, one was brought up by Mr. Westbrook, who mentioned maybe something integrated, we added like this. So it'd be basically a brick structure where the cabinet is on one side.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, cabinet with the EMC underneath, so again, it would be kind of one of whole pieces like this, yeah.
Okay, so somebody, yeah, and instead of Aspen Dell, they have your whole, and your.
Yeah, I think that the preference would be to have it stacked, because you get a little bit more of the height, and that's what, of course, we would be one for BZI for on that. Should it be, I, we should be able to get, as long as the structure is supportive, we may have to go a bit thicker because the EMCs themselves are several hundred pounds each face.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I like that a lot, but I just want to say, because, you know, part of the recording, I would love to know why they can't just, yeah, I'm not going to give answers, so it's a rhetorical question, but what we used to, what Mr. Cox brought up, just makes sense to put your sign there and be done.
Well, definitely, they definitely want to be EMC.
Yeah, I understand.
It wouldn't be dynamic, it wouldn't be dynamic, it'd just be an extra sign for you.
Right.
I didn't expect you were planning to get a dynamic one on that.
No, no, no. Maybe it's because they want a sign on the corner, and then one would be against you, it's too big a sign, maybe that's what we're, we're. No, no, we've asked for that. And, and if you would have that, you wouldn't have the sign that you're proposing here, you'd still have maybe just. We're still, yeah, yeah, yeah. But you would have the logo. That I can't answer, let me put it this way, when I went and asked at least two or three times, I saw Chris Hall, nothing was allowed outside of the city of Macedonia and KFC, including the hotel.
There's got to be a reason.
That I can't, yeah. That I can't answer.
Would you be open to something, if you had to, something like that, where it's basically a brick box, and you stick both, both signs on the other side, just same thing? If that, if you did something like that, I would be real happy with it.
Yeah, I would too.
Kind of something, something do you?
I like that.
Kevin, you ought to make the motion, that, throw that in there, administrator approval, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, because I think as long as it's, yeah, something generally like that, is that something you guys would be, will take a look at?
Absolutely.
Knowing what the intention is, and if we came back to something really bizarre, so, okay. Any other comments or any thoughts? All right, then I'll make a motion to approve with administrative review of a new brick structure to mount the, both the logo sign and the EMC. So that's, that's it, without the attention. Oh, oh, I end?
The other item.
End, administrative review of the technical specifications for the EMC. Is there a second before we?
I'll second that.
Yeah, can you repeat that first part, a new brick?
I forget what I said.
Structure with a mount.
Yeah, like a revised brick structure with the logo and EMC signs mounted to both sides. Similar to the Aspen Dell Starbucks sign. Technical specifications. So we have a second?
I'll second.
I think, I think, I think Tony did.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Um.
It's right, it's.
82 next to the Taco Bell.
So it's right here on 82?
Yeah, it's like 5:45 East Aurora.
Okay, so it's on East Aurora, basically across from.
It's next to the Taco Bell, next to the Lincoln Blizzard, across the street, um, House Max.
Yes, no, okay, I just want to be sure, seriously, first of all.
No.
No, I know exactly where it is.
All right, thank you.
You too.
Next up is IHOP.
The IHOP.
All down. Name it. Get your name for the record.
Paul Walsh.
Got that, excuse me?
Yeah.
All right. Why don't you give us a little brief overview of what's planned here?
Current, well, this was recently, they are open for business and decided that we needed additional square footage preparations because the existing building, then the addition were relatively small for tip line up. So they're requesting a 190-square-foot addition for additional background storage.
Is that the pancakes? Or serve, service?
But they can figure, but, yeah, no increase in our, so it's just match existing brick and continue roof line on the east side of the building.
Mr. France, would you like to, your comments?
Yeah, they're pretty limited, so just really took a look at the parking, it's not going to impact it with the 20% reduction, they're still, they're still above what would be required, it's such a small addition. Really, all they're, they're doing is essentially filling in the space, if you will, in that one corner. If everything matches, I don't see a reason why we couldn't approve it. And I think Ms. Schultz did review it and had a few comments, that was my only request, was that she provide some comments to, to the request.
I think she just mentioned offsetting the wall because you have the whole building and then the, similar to what we did on the west side of the building, we just pull it in. And that, that we can do, we just keep the E on the roof line continuous, but we offset that, that's what you guys would like to see.
It's something just knowing that 40 or 50-year-old brick and new brick, there's going to be some difference in color and just.
But at the rear of the building, it's going to be the same exact brick, that polish, but on that east side, we can step that back.
So they did it on that side, or?
Yes.
Just to step that back a little.
Yeah.
Any other?
No, just when you resubmit, it sounds like you'll resubmit a final drawing, just if you can just make sure it's, when it prints out, it scales.
Oh, yeah, we can give you a full-size set.
11 by 20, 11 by 17 is fine, just, just so they, it matches the written scale when it, yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Yep.
Do you have anything?
I have nothing to add.
All right, would you guys have any? No.
No, I have nothing.
Have any other thoughts? Are you okay with that?
Administrator approval, if you can, something.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, we know what, some kind of step back.
Yeah, I think it's, so I'll make a motion that we do approve the drawings with all in common, just that the step back on the rear part of the building matches the one on the other side from the addition, just to break it off a little bit from the different inches of the brick that will be there at the back, continuous is fine, because that's the brick. And then, right?
It's approved with the step back to match.
Approved with the step back to match on the other side of the building. The rear of the building being continuous is fine.
I can, all right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And last is Patch Jewelry, if anyone wants to come up, from your kids, whenever your enforcers, whatever.
I was curious, I was actually going to ask you guys, before the meeting started, you said, which one, there's the master, I was going to say you wanted to take credit. I did not sign it.
There's, there's, there's not a signature.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wow, that's not good.
Bad night to wear shorts, it's like 40 degrees here. Might have some blankets in the fire department or something.
Round back on my own.
All right, would you like to give us a overview of what you've got planned, or what your changes you want to make?
So, just to roll it back, when we first came here, we had a tower with an EFS stand, which the signage was going to go in the windows. And we were told to get rid of the EFS, we were told to change the roof on the tower, change the roof on the tower, it made expectations. And we were told to load the tower, load the tower, we were asked to load the tower again, and load the tower again. And what that's left us with is not a lot of room for signage. And I know the city architect looked for something, I think kind of like the White House, and not going to be what the district is meant to be. And there was some concern of what a brick tower would look like with signage on it. And I think, and this one's right in front of us, I guess, you know, with EFS, starting working at that, this is one of the things that were recently approved, were pretty heavy brick, and I wouldn't mind being able to switch back to EFS and put that up better. But what we're trying to do is get back to something we can use with signage. So I mean, even this one, you know, put the coins in, put some soldier courses in. We're trying to incorporate everything that the people have brought to us from the city and really make it, you know, a vision of what that, of what the city wanted, but we need to get signage. We just don't have, of all the changes we made, just don't have the space to have it that way.
You don't have space for the windows, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I'm, please.
I'll get a grab. Sure.
Do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
So I guess I'll answer a couple of these, this was where they need this thing, and they just added the power to stop it, that's another discussion, but they're also a lot lower of the height than you guys are, and so are they.
No, this is, ours is shorter than this. You walk out there and look today.
But there's great indifference between the two, if you guys wanted it to be higher, I remember part of our discussion, where we wanted.
Yeah, but as far as the impact from the road, regardless of the sitting, if you'd be lower with my tower, we'd be higher, but from the road, this is as monumental as ours with EFS, with a box sign, which I also think is not allowed. But, you know, this, this is what is on our corner.
Well, part of your reasoning for wanting them for those windows there was to let light down into your sitting area. So now you guys want to remove them, and.
I mean, the interior is kind of our concern with what we're doing, so.
But it's kind of going back against what you were originally asking, talking about the windows, wanting the windows there to let that light down into the customer waiting area, and now to remove them, it's kind of going backwards there. I kind of don't see why getting the signage, actually putting it up in a peak would get you guys higher, make it even more visible.
It's too small.
Even if you changed.
But there's, there's only two feet up there, and it's, their sign is this way, it's not good.
What if it was just the logo itself?
Okay. A lot of money to, to have.
I'm going to have a higher tone.
You know? I mean, we've been, you know, over an hour.
Are we allowed to talk from back here? How that works?
I, I think you're allowed to speak if.
Well, I just, you guys got to understand, it'd be different if for 40, 40 years, we've been advertising DBJ, and we could put DBJ, but everything you hear that we, Aaron's built and we're working on, is Don Bash Tools, and that's a lateral sign.
Yeah, I just, it was just a suggestion, I wasn't saying to change it.
Yes, it's just square footage, like he said, I mean, they said, we don't have millions, just a matter of time. Okay, well, you know what I mean? And you, we buy that property so we can be seen to the building.
And this was also something that was agreed upon and approved.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can get as mad as you want, and I can tell you're getting irritated.
I'm not mad.
You have an approved plan. We're trying to work with you, we could say that, you're done, no, no approval, we're trying to work with you.
Yes, and that, but that's all Mark was trying to state also, is that we were trying to work with you guys, and us never building a building, it was just by us, instead of saying okay, or bringing up.
saying, "Okay," or bringing it up back then, because we've never done this, so we didn't have the signage. We were just happy that we were building a building, and then the signage came after the approval, and now we're dealing with that. Yes, it's backwards, and we're well aware of that.
And that's, that's where your design professional, you know, should be needing a little bit of that too, as to where the signage should be going. So, you know, again, I think it comes down to, you know, we gave you, the tower height was given so that those windows could get put in there to allow the light down in for a specific reason. So now we're taking the windows out, and I think that it just doesn't, it doesn't look right anymore.
Can I do something like this? This is the first time right in front of us.
I think you still need windows up there.
They have windows.
I wasn't part of that approval, so, and I don't know what was...
If I have a gate to, then I guess...
That was not approved, that's not what was approved, or it's a wrap.
Nope. Now, I say, you have, what is approved is, we feel is very nice looking. I look at the picture of that, and it just, to me, it just does not look good.
What, if you could imagine Don Bash Jewelers up here, who did this in all eaves, how they have like this on the top, is that something that could do?
Why couldn't you do something like, what, a handshake?
It's kind of like the White House, and I don't want to do a strip of windows around.
Okay, so what if you just did a couple of bricks, and you don't have to go all the way around?
Well, I don't think hers is to scale, because those windows would be all this long. The windows would have to be dramatically smaller.
While we're trying to work with you guys, you have your ideas too, so, I mean, you didn't come back with anything, you didn't sketch anything to show us, like what your thoughts are on this, so...
Well, I turned in drawings, I turned in drawings with the snap.
Well, you know you did, but Pam, you received a sketch from Pam, so, did you not come with anything to like, even come up with something to show us?
I think the example showed us what the interior would look like, and then we would like to fit in with it.
But that's not what we were originally told us to approve in this.
Plans have changed.
You saw our, our, our design architect...
I, I can change our roof to be just like that, on the bottom.
But she's got windows.
No, I'm saying this here, we changed our roof to be like that, because we originally started like this, we decided to get one, so we add more features to it. Yeah, it's a green pyramid, it's not exactly...
Still, your sign wouldn't be big enough if you put the windows in.
No.
Pam Schultz.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a taller...
But did you look at it? Did you, did you sketch it out to scale?
Yes.
But if you think, did you bring it, so we can look at it?
No.
Okay.
So, I, I think, I think what's good is, okay, you submitted your plans, you said we don't like it, you even gave you an idea, and then you came in with nothing else to counter that, besides, "Well, look at this guy did, and what this guy did, and what this guy did." That doesn't make it right. I'm not liking it anymore, just because...
Yeah, I don't understand.
Okay, now you're getting insulting, which is making me want to approve this even less.
Okay.
We would like to work with you, and come in with something. Of course, we table this until the next meeting, and that's, that's what I'm about to do, because you don't appear to want to work with us.
No, I do.
We've given you comments, you came back with nothing besides pictures of other places that, that are not your building.
We accommodated every suggestion from you guys.
And, and it was approved, and it was agreed upon, there was give and take.
And now we have a problem.
Yes.
And we're trying to solve it, and we, there wasn't a lot of give and take, we just said yes.
Well, then that's your own fault.
You're right, that was our fault.
We did, we did compromise on the height. We went back and forth on the height, I moved the one we did, and we landed it, I thought was a pretty tall height, you guys approved it. I mean, it was a lot higher. We, we, I think we originally thought it should be less than even the 32 feet, and I think Pam had thought, if I'm correct, so forgive me, but I think Pam wanted it less than 30. I think that thought 32 feet, when I kind of sketched it out, was a fair height, so...
I think if you go out there, it looks very unfortunate.
How much height would you need, if you, if you could put the windows back in, what we seem to want, two, two more feet higher, or would that do with the brick? I was referring to the structure. Not the structure, okay.
Yeah, we'd have to check with the structure engineer.
Let's see what the couple of guys I can see.
We want to...
We want to...
We reduce the size of the windows.
I brought that up, you said it can't be done, so...
But it can't be done with weight, you can't do it with weight, with scaling.
But, but what I'm saying is, is he should have brought that back to us to look at. He says it just didn't work. Well, how did it not work? I don't have anything to look at, other than Pam's sketch, and what we were originally approved. So, and if he's saying this isn't the scale...
Well, you have what I submitted.
Correct, but it doesn't...
Or this mean, so you have...
But you're telling me that the windows don't work?
I'm saying the windows will be very small.
But show us how it does small, and let us say that, okay, let us visually see that they aren't too small, and say, "Okay, well, maybe we do this, or do that." You didn't bring anything for us to look at.
I think we did something with transit windows, didn't we? And we got told that they didn't like it.
Right.
They said it transit windows.
That was way back, probably four seasons ago. No, 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 I said...
Something over with transit windows.
Oh, with the signage guy, yeah.
And they said that they didn't approve, they didn't like the smaller ones.
Like I don't have anything for us...
I think that came from Brian or from Pam. Because that came through with the signage.
I don't, I don't recall, did I comment on transit windows?
Yeah. This was, this was like recent.
Yeah, very, very recent.
I'm saying...
Who would have come across?
Too small, like basically half of the light.
Oh, I guess it doesn't really matter, doesn't it? He suggested, the board had the rule down, I never heard the word before, so the board had the rule down.
When did you send that email?
I sent it, I did.
Yeah, when? When was that?
That's what I'm trying to find.
Did you send it directly to Pam, or did you send it to Pam?
Um, I think I copied Pam, just wrote it, and got comments back from Pam, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm just trying to find it in my emails, though.
Yeah.
It came...
It would have been with this last discussion, with her drawing out and sketching...
What email did it come from?
It would have come from me, Dustin@myej.com.
We didn't see that, though, because I don't think that, again, I think if there's a hybrid of something in between this, and maybe what you're showing, I, I just think windows need to be up there to some form, so I think just seeing something and seeing how it can possibly work, is not something we're opposed to, but we can't go off of not having anything in front of us, of these photos of other buildings.
Maybe on a table, a table, they bring it back with a few suggestions. I never heard the word transit windows before, maybe all around, and maybe a little higher tower, something, kind of back with something, maybe, maybe you're right, we don't have anything to look at.
Why wasn't the, the windows in the tower requirement to get more light into the display areas? Thought I read that somewhere, that there was necessary to get that in, get more lighting.
We have, we have sufficient lighting inside, I mean, the jewelry, we have, you know, a lot of light in there, and obviously we're going to be hoping that... We heard that, about the lighting, and it sounded like a great idea, so, you know, it's off the table, so we don't have anything to look at.
We had to make decisions. The one, important one is signage, so that visibility, and we can light the interior in other ways, but I can't get more signage on the building, or more square footage for signage.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Since I don't have the context, I mean, I would have to go get an architect, scale out, do three quarters of an inch to one foot. What is the, the square footage that you're showing on the plans that you submitted for the Don Bash Jewelers signs? What is the area of that sign? Wall sign?
Can I just, and this is not, I, I'm just going to ask you a question, but is there, are you guys opposed to taking the diamond, putting the diamond up above there? I know that your sign normally does, it's normally lit here. So, again, it's not, to be offensive, it's your brand, what are you opposed to doing something similar to that? Because I think that's actually a new word, the windows would be a little higher. The sign, the diamond can almost push itself up in the peak, and then Don, and Don Bash is still right below there, and that would be okay, but, again, I don't know if your brain reads from left to right, and the diamond being up top would be... I'll go against the way you guys want to see it, I guess, but I agree.
So, I'm 100% okay with you doing windows like this, this would give us more than enough room to make signage, that would be preferable for routing. Whether we do the diamond or don't do the diamond, I would be...
No, I think, again, the reason why I asked if it could just be by itself was, sometimes you see a logo just by itself, but again, I understand your reasoning, that you're known as Don Bash Jewelers, so maybe just see your logo, they may not place it, but I think if you were to explore possibly putting the diamond up top, so it kind of sits closer to inside the peak, Don Bash is right below there, maybe like get these windows just a little bit taller, and separate them out a little bit more, or extend them out a little bit, still keep your, the coining going up the sides there, or keep the brick there, so at least it still has that, you know...
I can't make it much wider.
Okay, that's fine, it doesn't have to go all the way up that, okay, just even just, so you still have that corner all of it, so you still have the bones of like the brick there, but you can still get, it's almost...
Or you go reverse, with the last corners.
It's, it's almost similar to what Pam had sketched here, but your brick runs all the way up to there, your brick runs all the way up there, you still get the windows there, and then the diamond can sit up in there, and then I think you would actually get your letters, or would get larger and bigger, I think. I think you could get, because I think you could stretch out Don Bash, you could get a little bit taller and higher, with the diamonds up there, yeah, that's not...
Is that new code, or is that not this two side?
No, I just... Does that...
I, I, I'm still, yeah, I wasn't willing to, so, I'm still trying to understand the context of the size, what's shown on this design feature that was presented to the commission. Do you know that? How big is that wall sign? 50 square feet?
I, I don't know off the top of my head.
I mean, I think, from a context standpoint, it makes a lot, in my opinion, it makes a lot of difference, like, how much signage are you asking for? I don't know the answer to that. It would be helpful to know that.
The maximum, the maximum level, yeah.
I think it's 100, 140 square feet, is what we get.
So, if they were to take the diamond, with the diamond up top, and then they would have Don Bash Jewelers right below that, it wouldn't, it would just count the diamond and then Don Bash, it wouldn't count the actual square?
I think if they're, you're essentially saying stack them, and if they're close enough, then yeah, I think it's just a single sign.
Okay.
Need to look at it, but I'm also, I guess I'm just also wondering, in the, without looking at the interior, why couldn't you do some signage here, and leave the, because the windows were here, right?
Yeah.
Previously, why couldn't you do signage here?
Well, that's where I brought up the fact, if they take and put the diamond up in that top part, separate the two, and then put Don Bash right below there, and then still keep the windows to some extent, they might have, maybe they're not as tall as we originally approved, but maybe they get a little wider.
Yeah.
Or something along those lines.
Yeah, that could work, I mean, it just feels like to have some scale would be helpful.
But this does, this does not have that. So, okay, I guess we can put roofs in detail, on the tower, get the diamond up, get the low windows.
Isn't the tower 10 by 10?
It's 14, 4 by 14, 4. So come back with this, the top.
That's, obviously, I mean, again, it's a branding thing, I mean, if you guys are okay with that, I don't have a problem, but, but conceptually, as we're talking here, I think if you put the diamond up there, pushing it up, it gives you extra better visibility, in my opinion, than what has been presented, or what was originally submitted. It gets it higher up there for you, you get the diamond up top, Don Bash right below, I think that could get a little larger, if you're not going to go over your signage. Then get the windows, maybe a little bit taller, and stretch them out. I think it's a kind of a hybrid of this right here, and that. I think if you take and you bring the brick piers up, I don't think it would look as, yeah, this is just sketching over Pam's sketch, it may not look as much like a light tower, but, you know, I think the window's going from right there, but then still getting it off right there. Again, just sketching over this, subtracting, but...
So, what do you think if we just took, basically, these houses, because this is obviously to scale, where if we took the windows, where the signage, and that...
Where, when you say where...
The agile windows. So we bump these, the wooden signage, so basically, not to use side.
100% of the line.
Yeah, I think that could look, I think it could look okay. I think you just have to...
Just get a little wider.
Maybe it's a little bigger. What's that? That's what I said, I wanted it to, I wanted it to get wider like that. If you guys don't want it to go all the way in from the middle of the mountain.
It's a diamond.
So, yeah, but if you put it up top, you have the arrow going down.
Correct, yes.
You'd have it going down.
Yes.
That's sort of a, yeah.
I think, yeah, I mean, if you guys don't want it to get as wide as the, as all the brick piers on the top of that, maybe just break them up into like three. I don't know, I mean, I guess you're going to, you're going to have to study that a little bit, but I think if you were to take it, if the windows get a little bit wider, stack the sign.
Can we get rid of that top element?
Um, yeah, I kind of feel like you'd like, a little much.
Make the windows taller, be more even, just taller.
No, I was talking about this, this right there.
Can I just, again, why can't you fit your signage up in the peaks up at the top? I mean, if they're to scale, I just traced it out, you have a lot of wasted space, I'm assuming it's a cabinet-style sign, so you have a lot of wasted space, why can't it fit up top? Why can't this sign put up here? These are windows down here now, right?
Yes.
Why can't this sign fit here? Can you explain that to me?
It doesn't.
Then your plans aren't to scale.
I mean, all I did is simply just sketch it, I just traced it right from on blank paper under, and it fits up there, if you take the corners off.
I think when you read my letter and said that we were not, we're showing the basic concept of the signage, but the final signage drawings were coming with the, with the final sizes.
I think you guys need to evaluate that, because we might not even have a problem, or if the problem might be very miniscule, that I would have avoided it. Some frustration we're feeling right now, I think that if it, it needs to be investigated in the garage, or else we don't know the answer to it.
All I can say is, obviously, this building is getting built and framed and all of that, so...
I understand.
You guys are okay with it, I'm fine with it, as it is, windows wider.
We're going to have to see the actual drawing, if we can.
But, you know, if you prove that it all can fit, I guess, and then you'll be satisfied with the sign, it can go in there.
Here would be my concern, is that we can kind of tell you guys to go, and then you find out that your sign still wouldn't fit up there, it's too small, because I think there still might be a little bit, once he goes back and draws some of this, there might be a little bit of room for you guys, maybe to get a little bit quicker sign, but then again, it might have to get smaller. I'm just saying, you could have to, one way or the other, and not a lot, and if you guys want to paint into a corner, where all of a sudden your sign... I, I get your concern, and I think that we'd be going, you don't want to go backwards, so...
If your signage company is...
We need to know what those sizes are, we need to know how that works, and maybe it...
Your signage company is, don't worry about the signage, don't worry about the eyes of working.
Well.
We need to know what those sizes are. We need to know how that works. Maybe.
But they can do with the size, but. We'll know if it fits or not.
I guess is there? We've kind of come up with a concept of wire windows. Do you think we can only make the header on windows?
Yeah, I think the header, I think some, maybe just some foam detailing, maybe it's smaller. I think it'd almost suit a little bit.
I do a salon course.
Yeah, I think salon course or something. Just, I think maybe if they pop out just a hair, just that they come out like a half inch, three quarters of an inch, just to give it some kind of depth there. Just a little bit of aesthetic up there, especially being so tall, I think would look nice. These, I almost feel like these are a little bit too big for the windows themselves, maybe. So, I think, you know, even if they did get a little smaller, five to that.
Okay. I guess I'm wondering, is there a way you can describe this? It details that we, something that I think would be satisfactory. That could be potentially approved administratively if Pam takes a look at it. Yes, that's what describes what, that's what the language describes. Knowing full well that the sign, whatever signage you put in, you know, if you're proposing this layout. Your signage has to be inside there and we're not going to, you know, you can't go above any limits of square footage. Um, just because I know where you guys are going to drive by. I knew this was on the agenda. I see they're not working on the tower because they're only going to get this change. You know, I know it's, you know, I know another month, wait, it'd be not scheduled for this. I just want to leave that over.
It's not good because where we're at, it's running to a lot of work. We're feeling the pressure from all sides. And it's not, not your guys' fault. I mean, it's three years ago, they.
And we want to work, we want to try and keep you on path. I just don't know if, is there, is there a way to do that?
I want to try to sketch something else. At least they have something to go off. If you don't look after it, I'm not.
It's true. I see that administrative leads, they don't want to come back.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to think. Is there a way to do it so they don't have to come back, but we can express? Scott, it's a good way to.
This sheet appears.
And if you guys, is it making sense to you guys when you describe with a little wider windows, a shorter header? Than with the logo? Longer diamond.
I'll keep yours in case I need it.
Is that okay? Well, I don't know. I think I understand, it's one of those, it's kind of you can draw it up, just, you know, if you want to take with them. But would you be able to describe that in words? As part of emotion?
Well, I want to give the sketch, so it kind of like.
It's slow.
Yeah.
Should that sketch go on?
Okay, I guess let me ask this, because when we go on record, are you guys okay separating the diamond and then Don Bash below where it wants to fit? I don't mean to put you guys on the spot. If you need to go back and have that conversation.
As long as the space is there.
I, I think you would get a little bit bigger of sign if you can push it up there and then again, you get better visibility.
I guess.
Center of the name a little bit too.
Yeah.
You have it way over the.
Like, is it going to change your mind? Do you rather, you know, decide it's got to be in a line?
Right.
Just note that it's going to be, that's smaller to compress in there. But I guess we don't have to, we don't have to necessarily say that this will be the sign. It kind of has, I think, the intention to maximize the size of the space.
I just heard you guys say with the other gentleman that the letters had to be twelve inches with the moon?
That was for an electronic message sign because of the speed.
Okay. Well, I was just doing math in my head.
Well, we have eighteen, sixteen letters with spaces, so.
That'd be a foot.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing in code that requires it for non-electric, electronic message. So, you're fine.
Just doing math in my head, like we're only fourteen feet wide, so.
Your sign person needs to sign the sign to the space that they have.
I want some.
Within the code and eliminates the, if that's just a box on the wall, there's a lot of things to change on that to make it fit and look better.
Thank you.
I think, I guess maybe we just cut a little bit. Do you know, do you know what the height of this is? Mine's, mine's what is?
Oh, that's good.
The top is. From like, from the top of this, soldier course to the bottom of this, or the top of this soldier course. So, what if we said that the windows have to be five feet? So, that gets you, top of the windows have to be five feet to get you a foot, give or take here to play with the signage coming.
Take that top section.
Yes.
From the May twenty twenty two plan, the window was six foot ten.
That's tall. Okay.
Does that help?
Yep.
So. Keep that soldier course right there. And then from like, from the top of that soldier course to the top of that soldier course, we're saving about six feet. So, I think if you make the windows ten feet high, so that whether you do, or I'm sorry, five feet high. And then we go, you know, along here to this, you're coining up, or don't continue to go up. Sorry, just continue kind of that line of coin to occur up.
Okay.
And then the windows to go up along there, I would say. Yeah. I think the two looks a little off, so I think like three or something in there. And then five foot high and then return to the sailor course. And then your signage can fit in from that, from the top of that peak all the way down that part of the. It's similar to Pam's, yeah. It's just a diamond. And again, you might be able to, you might still get the size signage you want if you don't have staffed. I, I don't know until, until you have the sign guy looking at it.
Five foot windows, so sailor course. Sign is a, it's a sailor. A sailor, a soldier course is standing there, but that sailor course is to be brick, is to be brick this way. Sure. So, I believe it's six. Yeah.
Okay.
Maximize window size.
Yeah, I, I really think having those windows facing almost across there is going to be.
Feature.
I get, I get what you were saying there where it was, where you would have picked up on it being like a lighthouse. But I think if you carry that brick pier up and you were just to go from pier to pier with windows. I don't think initially, like, you know, I'm just catching over a sketch. I don't think it's going to look as much as what your concern is. I could be wrong. And then again, they got a little squatter and then your signage can get up, you'll have, I think, a decent amount of room to put your signage in there. But I could, you know, until the sign guy starts to look at it, I can't be honest with you.
Just to invest in the general.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the modifications to the tower to allow for signage. By doing five foot high windows from the top of the soldier course on the tower. To the bottom of a sailor course. And that sailor course is to protrude out three quarters of an inch. Brick piers are to extend up to the other side of the. Tower. And the remaining areas to be for the signage. Kind of cover it all. Gives you guys a little bit of room to play with your signage area and area without. What's that? To be reviewed administratively.
I think that's the motion. All seconded. Any more discussion of you guys? You guys think this is okay? I guess.
I think the whole board general, then, you know, you're saying this.
Well, I think if we figured it out correctly.
Well, you said the original windows were six foot.
I'm going off of plans dated May sixteen, twenty twenty two, so I don't know if there's any changes.
No, those were the last.
Six foot.
The clerical add the words substantially important.
Yeah, substantially.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
That's a little better.
Yeah.
I need to be precise for each of these. Simple point two.
Yeah.
No frictions. Okay, so we've got a motion in a second. Okay, we're allowed to do it in a second here. So, I, and then I guess signage, we'll come back at some point. But this, I think, I guess as quick as you guys can turn it around. Our book with you with that reason, and I can't promise that they'll, yeah, but I'm sure they'll, they know where you're at and they'd like to be moving some of this. Um, is that, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, flip.
Maybe that will help.
I think, any other miscellaneous? Sign this. Susan mentioned, we've got calendars for the rest of the meetings next month. It's a week early again. So, it's the.
Other twenty year.
Oh, there is. Yeah, she put like, three pages from the back as a, it is a new calendar. If you pitch your, if you pitch your packet, save the last three pages. It's got the calendar and then everybody hears phone number, address, all that kind of stuff.
Oh, I did see, yeah, okay.
Have emergency kind of thing to check on here and draft some off. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Thirty-seven seconds.